Good evening. May I please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Saxi, seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Tonight we will start off with a school report from Burnsville High School. Presenting the report this evening will be Dr. Belmont, Assistant Superintendent Belmont, and Jesus Sandoval, Burnsville High School Principal, Sandoval, and a few student guests. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Daniels, member of the Board. We're kicking off our, this year's versions of the school reports. Some changes this year is, in the past couple of years, we've had tandems or triads of principals together. Instead, we kind of broadened out the amount of reports we have, and with each school getting their own evening. Another thing, a theme for this year is helping tell stories of data-driven decisions that are happening at the site. The Board hears a lot of 50,000-foot level data reports throughout the year. Hopefully tonight and into the rest of the reports, you're hearing examples of our leaders and our staff using data to drive outcomes, to identify like patterns to either interrupt or enhance and replicate. So, and tonight we have our flagship school, Burnsville High School. Over 95% of our students touch that campus at some point in their career. So with that, introduce Principal Jesus Sandoval.
Good evening. This is my third year as principal. Started off, so Jesus Sandoval, Principal at Burnsville High School. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. As you can see, we have some guests that will be up here shortly with me. But we'll start it off by sharing a couple of things with you all this evening with the high school. So with that being said, I will go ahead and get started. And so, one of the first things that I think is important for us to share with you all and within our school community are the, some of the things that ground us as a high school. And so, in regards to the emphasis of every student, every staff member, every family member belongs at Burnsville High School. That is fundamentally an important piece that's not only to me, but to many others. And that really is driven by, as you can see, you know, how we show up. It's important for us as a staff, as a student group, to be respectful of each other, to be responsible, to understand that there's differences within each other, but to highlight those differences. And hopefully you'll be able to see throughout the presentation today, some examples of us doing that. So you have two that I mentioned, two pillars. The third pillar being, at Burnsville High School, it's important for us to be engaged. And so, what does that look like for a student to be involved and engaged, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's our staff? And so, those three items are certainly some of the many things that ground us as a school community. It's important to note our emphasis on the profile of a learner. And so, it's important at Burnsville High School, not only to walk away with a graduation diploma, but to truly encompass and involve the seven characteristics of a profile of a learner. For example, students need to have that financial readiness once they leave the building and are off to post-secondary options. They need to be civically minded. They need to have that component of cultural proficiency and understanding that, once again, differences are important in any aspect. And so, one of the many things that we do is constantly review as a staff, through our staff meetings, what does it mean? How does that show up in regards to those seven items with the profile of a learner that has been embedded for some time now within our school? And so, certainly those are important pieces. And I think it was important for us to share with you all kind of some of the things that started off our school year. I believe that we're off to a great start of the school year. And some of the things that have allowed us to be in this position are some of the things that I'll share with you right now. So we've taken some time last year now into this year is to truly provide an opportunity for our staff to be grounded in our Tier One instruction. We've dedicated time last year and will continue to dedicate time this year in our professional development, where staff are meeting in departments to talk about the curriculum that they're providing, to ensure that it is aligned, not only with our state standards, but with each other and the coursework that they teach. And we've also taken it a step further within our building leadership team to provide some instructional guarantees. And so, that has really grounded us and ensured, no matter what classroom, as an example, no matter what classroom a student walks into, we have some fundamental pieces that are across the board. And so, that along with some of the time and efforts we're putting into in creating a school-wide resource, a walkthrough tool, to indicate how our measures are with our instructional guarantees. And so, I'm excited to continue that work. And we will have at one point later on in the, in the school year, sometime in December, a BLT retreat. And part of that retreat will allow our teachers to utilize that resource. And so, right now, we're just in the midst of creating that and near finalizing that. And so, that's certainly something that we have present within our school that we didn't have in the past. We're in our second year of our Ninth Grade Academy, and that's exciting. And at some point here soon, you'll be able to hear of a sophomore and how that has showed up for one of our students. With us, understanding that this is our second year of the Ninth Grade Academy, we have added a piece, a component to the academy. We've added a program called BAR for short, Building Assets, Reducing Risks. And this is a program that's been around for some time now, 10-plus years. It started within Minneapolis by a counselor, understanding that there's a need to highlight the assets of a student and to be able to systematically approach Tier Two and Tier Three support systems in a way that schools sometimes were often missing the vote on. And so, it's exciting to have our staff in the Ninth Grade Academy have the professional development of BAR and are implementing the pieces of BAR. For example, more specifically, the pieces entail, continue to have team meeting times, but have it more structured in the way that they're working through and the different assets that students bring and the interventions and supports that are needed. We are also, through the BAR program, providing I-time. And so, there are lessons that students would experience perhaps like in a math class this week. Next week, it would be in a science class. But it's lessons that allow the relationships to form, to build, and to further accentuate the positiveness of education and how that relationships are built on. So that's exciting to have. Yep. So we are also in our third year of Associate of Arts Program. And so, we are graduating, we will be graduating our second group, our second cohort in May, and that's exciting. We have started with grade-level student meetings. That's something new this year. We've, we've felt the need to really ground our students in what is it that they want to do? Allow them to provide opportunities to goal set. And so, that was part of the meeting. The other part of the meeting was just understand how we do things, logistics. How does the cellphone show up? How does attendance show up? And so, because of that grounding of the grade-level meetings, I feel like we were really off to a good start. And lastly, working through pieces that are, some changes within our district board policy around attendance and cellphones. And so, those are many things that we have implemented within the start of the school year that has helped us be in a really positive track. Some of the pieces from our systematic tools that we're using, that's important to note, MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. What does it look like for, from a Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three standing, whether it's academically, whether it's behaviorally? How do we support attendance? How does that show up for family engagement? We continue to work through and have Avid, a significant part of our high school experience, whether it's the Avid elective class or the characteristics that Avid has that is also being supported amongst many of our classes. Culturally proficient school systems are CPSS. That's an important piece as it's part of our profile of a learner, but also just the pieces that we need to continue to work through. And then our PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And so, those four systematic tools are very present within our high school. At this time, I'll take a moment and invite two of our guests up to be able to share their personal experiences. Up first, we have Luis Daniel Reyes Lopez. He's an 11th grader that will speak first, and then follow up with Isaiah Tilbury. Isaiah's a sophomore. Luis?
Hello. It's a pleasure to meet you all. My name is Luis Daniel Reyes Lopez. I am an avid elective student and a member of the EMR class. I mainly joined EMR to help people in case of any emergency that occurred, whether in school, on a job, or at home. Currently, they're teaching us how to do infant CPR, where it really calms my nerves, mainly due to the fact that I have a younger sister who is five years old, and I'm usually the one babysitting her at home. They have also taught us coping mechanisms against anxiety, and we can teach these mechanisms to other people. We, in another class that I mentioned before, Avid, they helped us, or they helped me organize this speech, and they also prepare me for exams such as the functions and trig exam I'm going to have soon. They also prepare us for the ACT, and they took us over on Tuesday to the National College Fair, where they have broadened my horizons and have shown me a few more colleges that I want to attend, for example, Moore. Avid has also helped me get an interview. In 10th grade, it was the career, it was more career-focused, and they found me a film director, and that interview really solidified my interest in the field. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Luis. Up next, we'll have Isaiah speak as a sophomore, speak a little bit about how his school is going and his impact being the first cohort of our Ninth Grade Academy.
Hi. As Mr. Sandoval said, I'm Isaiah. I just wanted to share some of the activities I'm in. I'm in marching band, drum line, and mountain biking. And I was also, as he said, in the first year of the Ninth Grade Academy. I thought the positive aspects of the Ninth Grade Academy was that there was more staff that could grow personal relationships with you and really understand what you need to be successful in school. And then, another thing was that there was built-in time to socialize with your peers as well as like the teams with the staff, so that you stayed with similar people in the classes that you took, so you could really grow closer relationships with new people from switching from the two schools to just the high school. All of that combined, I think really led to academic success for me and made me comfortable enough to join new activities and continue a challenging course load this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Isaiah. As we continue on, it's important to note graduation rates and what are some things that we're doing as a school to help support that. So in regards to a variety of things, back to, as I mentioned, with curriculum alignment, it's important for us to ensure that we have that clear alignment across the board. And so, the instructional guarantees, as noted before, will certainly help within our graduation rates. We know that it's important to identify and intervene early. And so, that Ninth Grade Academy really helps us, allows us to do that. I know we've, we have had a couple of new members within our counseling team, and then they too, as a unit, has really allowed us to work through and identify early the students that need additional support. Building strong relationships are one of the key factors in graduation rate, and I believe we have just an amazing and caring adults and staff within Burnsville High School. And so, leveraging our relationships that staff have with our students is certainly will aid with the graduation rates. The learning itself and how relevant it is to the students, allowing our staff to truly reflect on the lessons that they teach and identify that the lessons are aligned to the students that they serve. And so, that along with any academic support. So we have a tutoring, a couple of different tutoring opportunities for our students in addition to our critical recovery program. And lastly, our family and community engagement. Our Parent Advisory Council has grown this year. We have opportunities for our parents to come in and to the school. A little bit later on in October will be the first time that our families this year will be able to come into the school outside of the conferences purposely during the school day to ensure that they see what it looks like, the pathways, the classrooms, et cetera. So I'm excited for that. All of those items certainly help specifically and directly impact our graduation rates. I'm only one. We're only three. And there's many people that are within our high school, as I mentioned, that are caring and that collectively as a team, we are moving forward in the right direction. So at this time, appreciate you hearing our presentation, and we would open it up for any questions that you may have.
Are there any comments or questions from Board members? Director Mickelson?
Thank you very much for coming in and your presentations. I definitely appreciate it. It's great that we're getting started with the high school presentations. It's one of the best parts, I think, of the Board meetings during the school year. I appreciate that you mentioned how you're learning from the first year with the Ninth Grade Academy and looking for ways to grow it and improve it. Just kind of curious if there was anything else that you kind of learned about what particularly worked well with it or what kind of else, anything else that you kind of find needed to be changed or enhanced besides just the BAR kind of program that you have incorporated?
Yeah, yeah. I think, great question. One of the things that we did last year that we are now doing differently this year, we had four teams last year. And so, what we found is that there were students that, it was difficult to have a student schedule be a pure team, like Team One, for example. So we've made the addition or added to have two teams. And so, now our staff have a greater chance and our students have a greater chance to be within a particular team because we've narrowed that focus down. And so, that's one example of how we needed to pivot based on our findings throughout the first year of the Ninth Grade Academy. Yeah.
I'm also curious, as far as the new cellphone policy, if you've been getting any kind of feedback and how that seems to be going? I know in my student that is in 10th grade, that I've seen a difference now that it seems to be much more clear-cut about what the expectations are. And so, just kind of curious what kind of feedback you've been getting either from teachers, students, you know, at all and how it's going?
Yep. I would be happy to share. I would open up to any of the students. Would you like to speak to that, how that shows up within your classes before I go ahead, please?
In most of my classes, I've noticed that most teachers do do the poster thing with the pockets. And most students, I can tell some of them are usually just zoning out, but those who are trying tend to do it right away as they enter the classroom. Yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, what Luis is referring to, so every classroom has the pocket systems. And so, many teachers had that system prior to, but we ensure that all classrooms have that resource and that tool. What it allowed us to do is to not have that, classrooms pin up against each other, well, in this class, we're doing this, in this class, we're doing that. That's different. It was confusing sometimes. But to be able to have that baseline, this is a resource, this is the tool, this is the expectation, no cellphones during instruction time. And so, during bell-to-bell from a class, that doesn't surprise me that your own child, you know, shows up differently because we've seen an increase of conversations that are happening within the classes, as an example, because we're all doing that systematically the same. And so, I'm glad you brought that up and asked. Isaiah, do you want to speak anything about your experience within that?
I would just agree with what Luis said, is that most kids do put up their phones, or at least don't go on their phone anymore in class.
And lastly, just, I really appreciated your comments about when, kind of talking about the graduation rates, that I think it ties in with also some of your comments earlier around conversations around their goals, you know, students' goals and expectations, and having that learning really be relevant so that they see the benefits and the reasons for showing up and for graduating, and that this is something that isn't just a time that, you know, they really would, you know, should be doing something different. And that all of those conversations really can and hopefully will continue to show up in improved graduation rates, and that we'll, you know, hopefully see some good trends, particularly in some of the different groups that were listed there, that I think there's a lot of the conversations that are happening that are tying all of that together, which I really appreciate. And so, thank you for all of that work to make that holistic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Director Alt?
Thank you, Principal Sandoval. And Luis and Isaiah, thank you for presenting to us and sharing your thoughts. It's not easy to do public speaking, especially for some folks, well, at all ages, really. It doesn't matter how old you are, public speaking is your thing or it's not. And you both did beautifully. And I really appreciated the wisdom in your comments and what you shared about, you know, your goal-setting and how your experience at the high school is helping you kind of navigate where you might want to go after you graduate. So thank you very much for that. And for Principal Sandoval, I don't have a question, just a comment, because I think this presentation does a really lovely job fleshing out something that we've long talked about in this district in terms of each student having a caring adult and how important relationships are, because we don't want any single student to slip through the cracks. And what you've described is a very holistic approach to relationships, both among the students, between the students and their staff. And I just got a really good image of the growth that we can expect to see. So thank you for that. And I guess, I did actually have one question. On the cellphone question, kind of to dovetail on Director Mickelson's question, what is the parent's response and the family response to the policy and the implementation of the policy?
Great question. What has been the parent's response?
What has been?
Or is that?
What has, well, what has been and what is, has anything shifted?
Yeah, yep. Great question. I know that from the parents that have communicated with me, similar to how it's been communicated, something has changed, something feels different, and that's been voiced to me. It's also been voiced to me that they appreciate the systematic approach. So it's not two out of the seven classrooms, it's all classrooms that are doing the same thing, that it makes it easier. There's this pressure that's taken off of students and pressure that's taken off of staff when everyone's doing the same thing. And so, that has been voiced to me from parents and honestly, some students. I don't know if they are quick to say that, but that's the underlying, the underlying variable or underlying result of something that is provided systematically.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I want to just reiterate what everyone else is saying, that we really appreciate when you come and share everything that's happening in the high school. And Luis and Isaiah, thank you for coming. We really enjoy hearing the student experiences and how the programs are impacting you as well. And just, the student voice is very important in our district. The question I have for you, Principal Sandoval, is you were talking about adults and interaction with the students and having that adult interaction. And I was just thinking about, you mentioned something about talking with them about their career. And in those conversations, is there anything with assisting them when they're trying to pick their pathways and how that aligns with when they're choosing their classes?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. The answer to that is manifold. I think Luis provided an example, a filter just yesterday, where he was able to go and explore more options. I know within our College and Career Center that that is a place within the high school that we have where students often utilize that for many reasons, for many purposes. I know that we continually have a lot of visitors, both colleges or military, sometimes even businesses that show up within our cafeterias, because that is important to sometimes have that visual reminder on what does that look like? And so, oftentimes, the individuals that are in our space, we had military, for example, the other day, and the interaction that students are having with those individuals, and it could be very, something very small and very subtle, but those are sometimes lasting interactions. And what we will continue to do in preparation for our students making good choices around courses is truly provide the information that's necessary through our course catalog, not only to our students, but to our families as well. That will happen beginning of January, as that will be up and running. And so, that, there's many, many pieces that we do as a school that helps perpetuate that. And sometimes it's just as simple as a conversation. And so, there was a student in my office yesterday for something unrelated to careers, and it was important for me to bring in, what is it that you want to do after high school? it was important for me to bring in, what is it that you want to do after high school? How can I support you? If it's not me, who can I call to have the support that you need? And so I think those are just really critical pieces to ensure that our students truly have all the resources that they have, that they need to go to that next step post-secondary.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our student representative report from Favin Tesfaye.
Thank you. Going off of what Mr. Sandoval said, September was a great start to the school year. Homecoming Week was a huge success with students showcasing their school spirit with festive outfits and dancing the night away at the dance. Burnsville High School's Youth Service Advisory Council, a student organization that promotes community service, had a fantastic turnout at the annual Green Apple Day of Service, where over 40 students helped clean up the high school campus. Students also demonstrated their community spirit through the Fall Blood Drive, which took place last Thursday, where donors contributed blood to the Memorial Blood Center. The Blood Drive Committee also received exciting news. Last year, Burnsville High School students and staff helped donate over 284 units of blood, helping save over 852 lives, which was the most in the metro area. Last Friday, a few students, a part of Student Council, gave guided tours for inductees of the Burnsville High School Hall of Fame. And this October, Burnsville Strong, a school support group, is hosting a supply drive to help restock the Blaze Nation Station, a free store available to all BHS students. Members of the Latinos UNO DEO's affinity group has been showcasing Hispanic culture for Hispanic Heritage Month by sharing fun facts with students during morning announcements in both English and Spanish, as well as hosting a community night last week. Now, a special shout-out to Ms. Sexton, the Burnsville High School's College Career Specialist, for leading College Knowledge Month this October. She's organized events to help students explore college and career options, including college visits from institutions like the Minneapolis College of Art and Design, St. Thomas University, and many more. Moving away from activities, many sports have held senior nights to celebrate their senior players, including cheerleading, girls' and boys' soccer, dance, and volleyball. And good luck to the Burnsville High School football team, who are currently playing Hastings tonight. This now concludes my report.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Thank you for your report. Moving along, we will now hear a superintendent's report from Dr. Latonya Daniels.
Thank you, Chair Werb. As you know, I was able to attend the MASA Fall Conference in Duluth last week. While attending, I was struck by the work of the Dignity Index. Their approach acknowledges the reality of our differences in today's climate, yet challenges us to reframe how we engage with those differences and disagreements. At the heart of their message is a powerful reminder, every person is born with inherent worth regardless of circumstance and should be treated with dignity. This session resonated strongly with me, especially in light of our ongoing work around belonging. Belonging builds on the belief that everyone matters, that each individual deserves to feel seen, valued, and included. Last Friday's Hall of Fame ceremony offered a powerful reminder of the impact of believing and belonging. Through heartfelt messages, many inductees shared how a single teacher or just one person completely transformed the course of their lives because they believed in them or saw them. Their stories were deeply inspiring and reinforced our purpose to uplift our students and help them forge their own paths with confidence and support. Over the past several weeks, I've dedicated meaningful time to connecting with members of our community. I've had the opportunity to attend an AIPAC meeting, both the noon and morning Rotary Club meetings, and the 191 Retiree Association's meeting. At each event, I introduced myself, shared my vision for the school district, and engaged in thoughtful conversations. I was warmly welcomed and deeply encouraged by the support I received. It was a powerful affirmation of our shared commitment to education and community. I am excited to resume my listening and learning sessions, both within the district and throughout the broader community. Internal sessions with ISD 191 staff will begin later this month across multiple sites, providing space for meaningful dialogue and reflection. Community sessions will be hosted at local venues to ensure we hear from as many voices as possible. Dates and details will be shared soon. I look forward to engaging with our staff, families, and community members as we continue building a shared vision for our district. Last, but certainly not least, we have a celebrity in our midst. Our very own school board representative, Favin Tesfaye, was not only part of the 2025 Homecoming Court, but today, we learned she's been honored with the National Speech and Debate Association's Academic All-American Award. This prestigious recognition speaks volumes about Favin's dedication and excellence. I couldn't be more proud. Congratulations on this incredible achievement, Favin. You rock. This concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. Do board members have any reports they wish to share? Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Werb. Yes, it was, I think it was three weeks ago, I had the opportunity to, well, I chose to attend Community Education's celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. It was a Friday evening, and a delicious meal was served. And we had the opportunity to listen to speakers who came from outside of the district, from different communities in South America, and different, three different countries. And what was fantastic about it was the speakers spoke in their native language. So the folks who were in attendance had a chance to experience having a translator explain what was going on, which was a really great experience for me. They did, Etica Antiveros did a wonderful job leading the evening. And I really would like to encourage our community to attend the next evening celebrating, I believe it's Asia-Pacific Heritage, and that is at the beginning of November. I want to say it's November 3rd, but you'll have to check the Community Ed calendar. And it was just a lovely gathering. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Up first on new business, we are being asked for final approval for a band trip to Malta. Presenting the recommendation this evening will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Emily Najjar Field, BHS music teacher, and Tripp Chaperone. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent Daniels, members of the board. So I do want to admit, so I'm a proudly licensed social studies teacher, and I did, when I received their initial request for this field trip, I did have to look up where Malta was. But I now know. And our band and choir, our music teacher, Emily, Ms. Najjar Field, they were here last year presenting their initial plan, and now they're coming back with some more firm details and to share how things are moving forward. So please.
All right. Thank you. I'm Emily Najjar Field. I'm your vocal music teacher here on behalf of the Music Department and the Band Travel Club that hosts this particular activity. Our band and orchestra teachers are currently in concert right now at Burnsville High School, so you have me. As Dr. Belmont stated, we did put forth our initial application for approval back in September last year, and after receiving that approval, moved forward with our tour company, Gateway Tour Managers, to put together this, to put together the details of this tour. So we have provided all the details requested in the final application, along with rosters and itinerary for where we will be, and we respectfully request your final approval on this, or if there are any questions, I'm happy to help.
Back to you, Chair. I'll just read the formal recommendation that the Board of Education approve the final application for an international field trip for the Burnsville High School band program to Malta. Dates are February 14th through the 22nd, 2026. Thanks, Ms. Back to you.
Is there a motion to approve the Malta field trip?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Director Alt.
Not a problem. Thank you for coming, Ms. Emily. So looking at the itinerary, there are some pretty hefty layovers that the students are facing, that the group is facing. Were they aware, were the students aware of the layovers when they chose Malta?
When the tour company provides, they give a presentation at the end of an international tour, that same spring, they present on multiple different countries. And we do give information about the different prices and expectations and things you might experience on a trip like this, and then go into further detail about that last fall when we have an informational meeting that again is led by our tour managers. So expectations around travel do address that these sort of things can happen, and we do also address that when we talk about expectations for student behavior and also how to manage ourselves on a large trip like this, knowing that we have these long times together, things can become unknown, flights can get canceled. And so we do a great deal to set those expectations and make sure they are mentally and physically prepared for anything that might come your way when you're traveling internationally.
Awesome. And definitely sending positive thoughts for the chaperones that are going to be with the group.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Going through a large airport with a group of students is, it's good work. Last question is about the chaperones' expenses. How are those calculated and paid?
The chaperones, that our staff chaperones are covered by the tour company that hosts us, and parent chaperones who choose to come along to accompany their child pay their own way.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to consider approving the Language Access Plan. Here to prevent the recommendation this evening is Erin Tinklinberg, Director of Communications. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Werb. Dr. Daniels, members of the board, just presenting for your consideration the Language Access Plan to review real briefly. This is a new requirement by the state legislature to basically provide and ensure we're providing the services that families need. Our particular Language Access Plan includes resources for both parents and staff. The idea is to create this central location where people can find the resources that they need as easily as possible. Final note, we'll do some branding and some making it pretty after the board approves it, and then it'll be placed on the website and made available to families. So with that, my recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the Burnsville Egan Savage Language Access Plan, as presented and outlined in the board materials.
Is there a motion to approve the District 191 Language Access Plan?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Saxi. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Up next, we are being asked to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Burnsville Food Service Association. Presenting the recommendation will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Werb. Dr. Daniels, members of the board. Bringing to you tonight a recommendation, one of them's hot, a recommendation to approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Burnsville Food Association. Through the process, we started in July of this year, finished after two meetings on August 14th. We removed dated language, we updated language for second language speakers within the department, also updated uniform stipends and the attentive incentive for year-round employees. The two-year increase cost is just over $250,000 with a two-year package of 7.12%. And again, the schedule increase was equivalent to a two-in-two settlement. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Burnsville Food and Service Association in Independent District 191.
Is there a motion to approve the Food Services Collective Bargaining Agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? Director Alt.
Thank you. Stacy, I'm looking at page eight of the agreement with regard to the 5-0 match with, you know, certain employees, if they've been with the district a certain number of years and they've only utilized under so many days of sick leave, they can have them converted to a 403B match plan. I guess my question is more theoretical, but at what point are we encouraging staff to come in to work when they should stay home because they're sick?
I don't find that to be an issue.
Okay.
Thus, the attendance incentive. And this isn't just for using sick leave, it's actually any type of leave. So if they have personal leave, request a general leave, or sick leave, that would be a part of it. FMLA, bereavement, other types of leaves along those lines are exempted from this. That doesn't disqualify a person. But a person that needs to use or wants to use personal time or sick time, they're utilizing the benefit that was negotiated. For those folks who don't use that benefit, then we're providing a benefit for those that are never sick or never want to take time off. So it's an ability that everybody kind of wins. You know, use your negotiated time, fine. If you don't, hey, we got something for you there as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Our final item under new business is to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Presenting the resolution this evening will be Superintendent Dr. Daniels.
Thank you, Chair Werb. Before we dive into the formal resolution, I want to take a moment to shine a spotlight on the incredible support we receive. A huge thank you to all the community organizations and partners who champion education and ISD 191. Your generosity is simply amazing. Our most recent donations include the Minnesota Beef Council donating gift cards for our culinary arts program to purchase supplies, Lisa Pozorski for supplying items to our Blaze Nation Station, a free store for students at Burnsville High School, Open Circle Church and Cub Foods for supplying program supplies to staff and students. And we've also received generous donations to our Brain Power in a Backpack Program from the Wells Fargo Employee Giving Program, Fertz Fruits, Opal Apples, Prairie Lake Savage Optimist Club, Emmy Lou Tompkins Foundation, the Egan Community Foundation, and Valley Natural Foods. Once again, thank you all for your generous donations. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to approve and accept these donations to our district in accordance with the school board policy and Minnesota statutes, and to permit their use as designated by the donors. to permit their use as designated by the donors.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to accept donations as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Director Anderson, seconded by Director Saxi. Is there any discussion? Having been moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. When Sarah calls your name, please respond with aye or nay. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Hume?
Aye.
Director Mickelson?
Aye.
Director Alt?
Aye.
Chair Werb?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Saxi?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. The final item on our agenda is a closed session, as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.03, to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to discuss labor negotiation strategy?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The time is now 7:21, and we will move to the HR Conference Room to discuss labor negotiation strategy. We will return to our open meeting immediately following the closed session. However, please note that having no further agenda items after the closed session, we will not be returning to the dais upon completion of the meeting. Thank you. And board members, please make your way to the HR Conference Room.